Call the meeting board please. See, my room is excused. First item of the agenda, consideration of the meeting minutes from September twenty seven, twenty twenty three. Have any questions? There's a few items in yellow. So we need on page seven, motion to approve the meeting minutes from September thirteen.
Oh, she she didn't know who did it.
Okay, that's November eighth minutes, alright?
Looking right now.
This is on page, September twenty seventh.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the agenda, November eighth today.
It's page seven and page eight.
Twenty seven, alright.
The yellow on page eight too.
Yes. What this applicant highlighted on page eight? Okay, I mean.
Yeah, I mean he referred to his applicant's proposal throughout the meeting.
Yeah, about ten or ten times before that, so I'm finally just leaving that.
Well, just take it out.
Okay. On page seventeen, there's a whole, that whole section is highlighted.
Oh, yeah.
I I mean, I read it, it's seems like that's what we talked about.
Right, you just basically summarized.
That most be done. Yeah, looks looks good to me.
If we're going to, um. Page thirteen, OJ said, uh. Uh, Slutman dropped in the question, except specific documents listed in the August twenty first, twenty twenty three membrane as a master plan.
Paul, I'm sorry, where were you at?
Thirteen.
There's the page thirteen, we attach the memorandum to the minutes so that. Um, we know what those are.
Yeah, that's being added to the minutes.
Yeah, it's like that was added so we don't forget what it was. Eight seventeen has a whole bunch of yellow on it.
And this doesn't.
Right.
Sorry.
No reason for that to be yellow.
That's where I left off in reviewing it.
Okay.
Sorry, reading.
On the next page, can I offer a little change?
Eighteen.
Page eighteen, if you from the bottom, if you go up four lines. That sentence says, uh, Slutman's representative, OJ Robinson advising, they have to take out the roadways even if they are dirt. Can we change it to, OJ Robinson advising, they have to exclude the roadways even if they are dirt in order to determine lot coverage ratio? They don't have to take out the road because they physically dig them up. They just have to exclude them in calculating.
In order to what?
Well, for lot coverage purposes.
Yeah, in order to determine or in order to calculate the lot coverage ratio.
And or calculate the lot coverage ratio, roadways are not, roadways, roadways are not are not included.
Is that the same as they have to exclude the roadways?
Well, no schedule, you're writing in it back, you're doing the calculations. Yes, the purpose of calculations.
Alright.
I can understand it one way or another.
That's the only other thing I had.
Alright, Jim, want to have anything else? Is your motion?
Motion to accept.
Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Right. Alright, meeting minutes.
Fix those used to be, when I sent them typically for the agenda. Um, we used it, so this is gonna disappear, this heading, and then you fill out for the final, see the very top, where this is, that's really from you. Seal, you'll need this.
This isn't the one that we talked about at the beginning of the meeting, I think.
This is November eleventh, twenty twenty three.
Sorry, man.
It's a non-meeting, that's forty.
For the long minutes.
What meeting are you referring to?
Well, we met with Jason Dennis prior to September five, planning board meeting.
Okay, yeah.
Maybe, um.
It's not, not meeting for twelve minutes.
Right.
Alright.
Okay.
What can I have? Page ten, item two. Says Chair Spanos advises the board took a vote to have them finish the site plan review, but he hasn't heard anything further. Uh, it really, the vote was having them come in for site plan review for the improvements. Already. Got site plan review for something, and the board voted that it was not what they got approval for. So I mean, it's not like, it insinuates the site plan approval is half finished, but it isn't.
Okay, so what do you want it to say instead?
Chair Spanos advises the board, took a vote to require them to come in for site plan review for the. Upgrade.
Then just leave, but yes, and nothing further?
Yeah. Do you want to have anything else? Motion to approve those minutes with changes? Joe, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All staying, I think, way, so.
Okay.
That was the whole thing.
Or to have approval on abstention. Right, meeting minutes for October twenty fifth, twenty twenty three.
Hit the top of this one, too.
Their motion to accept the minutes as presented for October twenty fifth, twenty twenty three.
Smooth.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Joe, second, motion.
All of them, wasn't there?
Okay.
So four yeses and one abstention.
Item on the agenda, continuing, continuing on other business, exceptional. Douglas and Ed to P. Haywood, property owners, and Hudson J. Perrier, and Wendell P. Lima, DBA, Nata, Mexican Grill Investors.
Good evening, I'm Douglas Hayward.
Yeah, I just want, um. We don't want to do anything.
Oh.
And I just want to see the.
Okay.
The events of a real meeting.
Hey, so, uh, I guess the last time we left off was because you guys didn't have enough information, we need to get together some more facts. Um, I did compile some things, and I think that, uh, you guys have possession of that, and I didn't know. You had a chance to review it yet, basically, it's showing two, um, permits that were issued. Uh, land use authorization permits, one back in the day, and one more recently, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty, for additional on the deck. Um, the existing deck, uh, meets everything, I think, it doesn't, I don't think it needs a land use, because I don't think it needs a survey, because it's only ten feet from the building. Exits exactly what was approved, it's over twenty five feet from the, the lot line over next door, obviously much, you know, more than. Than the, than the setbacks required. Um, the seating is pretty much the same, because for, you know, um, it's not all enclosed there, so. A lot of the seating gets cut out, so you've got forty inside, twenty four outside, I think I looked at it, I think I had approval for sixty four seats. If you guys have an issue with seating, if you need, you know, like we have more than what's supposed to, if there's more money due on water tap fees or whatso. I guess that would be an issue, but I don't think it's an issue, because we don't have that many seats. And, uh, parking looks like it's not an issue, because if you go by the original parking, you know, uh, that we, that we put in, but. Back in the day, that's still here, uh, so I don't think we need to readdress that. Um, yeah, so I don't know, just what we, other than, other than the, the roof that was put on, and other than getting that, you know, permit for the roof. Um, I mean, I think that's what we need to do, as far as, as far as what I see. You guys see something different. You know, let me know.
How many seats do you have?
Sixty four.
That's with the, the, the deck?
That's with the, well, we got forty inside always, the fire, the fire chief actually gave us, uh, fifty for the outside because of the additional. So that would say ninety, but we don't have nine. And when you have the, and when you take the deck that's there now, that we closed up right now at this point, is only sixty four, because it's even maybe, it's just about sixty four, because if we. It's, we took away a lot, because in the summer we have more. So I, I think we have more than sixty four, to be honest. I think it could be in the area of seventy four. So we could readdress that, or we could just make a decision now, maybe we could put in there, I mean, we have up to nine.
So you have parking space for.
We have enough, because, uh, we have parking for twenty four, twenty four for each thing, you're talking eighty something plus.
Just nineteen spaces.
Nineteen, yeah.
Ninety.
Yeah.
Well, it's a big, a bigger picture.
No, we don't have nineteen, we have more than that.
Yeah, um, look at the bigger, the vast. Park, but I have to take a photo of that because it was so huge. Um, there's twenty fours and.
You've revisited the space, that was my assessment earlier, I didn't know, I said twenty last time, I didn't know how much.
The one that looks like.
Okay.
This one, right here.
You did a nineteen, I think, so that. It sounds, you know, if you want to go twenty.
Twenty three, twenty four, said you have twenty four.
Twenty four, right.
Twenty four.
Now, but these twenty four spaces of the required width and length?
Yes, goes up scale, okay, like eight by one or eight by ten, or nine by ten.
They need to be. Was it nine by?
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
Well, that, that line is not full, because there's tons of space in between there, like what, like, in the room between the two.
Yeah, look.
You know, I just don't have it scaled out, out that much, I have only the lines scaled out with, you know, traditional parking lines on nineteen feet long.
That doesn't matter what traditional is, what the town.
No, I mean, the parking line itself is what I have there, I don't have the exact, the exact space term around the, the. If you, I mean, if you started, I don't know why we're even readdressing it, because this was put in twenty years ago.
That's true, you have a permit. My permit was for, uh, just to say how many spaces of it.
It's for that, it's for that right there.
They said it was for sixty four?
Yeah, this is the big, I just took a photo of that.
And we just submitted, this is two thousand and seven.
Two thousand and seven.
I'm looking at it. So the, the one who stepped up the plan was.
Well, he signed the permit or something, but the town approved the, uh, the whole plan.
Yeah.
You know, so that was part of the whole plan.
It says sixty, sorry, go ahead. John, that says sixty four seats, the plane you have?
On the.
No, the, the original plan was forty seats.
Says eight seats.
One, I can't, uh, on ten, something scribbles on.
No, the original plan, we got approved forty seats, Ed Sutton gave me the seating at forty, because we only had indoor when we first signed it. But even when he did it, he even gave me like a, um, time to pay, because I didn't even have the money like that, gave me some time to pay it. And then I paid the forty seats, and then I laid a twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, I think it's in here somewhere, you might have it, but I got it right here. It's, um, I asked for more seats, I asked for twenty four more seats, and I paid for twenty four more seats. That was back in the day, yeah, I got it right here. I got my check and everything that I signed, that was, uh, six fifteen oh eight. Six fifteen, it says around six, sixty four seats stated full. So that was without any parking considerations, we talked about that back then again. Here my thing again, but now here we are again, talking about parking.
Well, you're talking about imploding.
Still doesn't have anything to do with parking.
Yeah, it does.
Uh, if he was already approved for sixty four seats.
Yeah, it's already approved.
It says in the new theory, the new system, but the old system didn't include that.
If he's approved, right, he's approved for sixty four seats, and if he has the parking. Four to sixty four seats as well as, uh, you gotta remember, some of that parking is also for. The residents up there, then you also have to have some for your health.
Well, that was, yeah, but it, that was put in after he got approval, he's packing for the health.
Parking for the health.
Yeah.
But I mean, it, it, it's parking requirement must have been back then, he must have had to meet it, right?
Yeah. He gave me, gave him a site plan review when he did this project.
Right.
Right, so he's already been approved by the town.
For sixty four seats.
For sixty four seats, so then all he really needs is a building permit to cover it.
Well, didn't he just say that he had closer to seventy four seats?
Right.
Well, to me, that's the.
I mean, I can do some more seats, I don't have to do it, if you guys say I can't put more seats, can't put more seats, right? I gotta though, I just said if I'm gonna pay for the seats.
Put more seats, but you have to come in for approval.
Site plan review.
Why do I gotta do a site plan with more seats?
Because you're expanding the use.
Yes.
Yeah, but I didn't do that before.
Before when?
I got approved. Well, I mean, before, when I was in twenty fifteen, I didn't have a site plan review, well.
Yeah, but it says he just added a deck, it doesn't say anything about adding seats.
But you may not have come in for, this doesn't mean that you didn't either. But, I mean.
Well, I might, no, I did, I think I did get it though, because in twenty fifteen.
Well, the deck is on the second floor, you had approval for in two thousand and fifteen.
I got it, that was, yeah, that was just.
That's what we did to the resident.
Right, 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 but that was even before twenty.
I don't remember if you came in for that stairway on the side for.
I think you do, you went down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Stairway on the side.
Exactly, exactly, well, I mean.
I think the only question is your, your, your parking and, and your seating, so. And then I think all you need is a building permit for the, to cover it, if he's got it approved, right?
Yeah. I mean, I, I mean, he gets approvals for number seats, if that's his decision, if he wants to close on, it doesn't, doesn't really affect the back.
Right, right. So you can only have so many. You can only have so many parked seats based on the parking spaces that.
Yeah, like four, four, one seat for, oh, four seats for one space.
What is the, what, what?
Four to one.
I, but I'm looking it up, do you know right off the bat what, what it is?
What's the question?
How many, how many parking spaces he needs per seat?
Four to one.
Four, four seats per parking space.
Four seats.
Once parking space for people.
I calculated, here are four seats per parking space.
Twenty four.
Give me eighty.
Okay, so he has twenty four, this is Carol speaking. Trying to, like, pay attention to what we sign here. Uh, he has twenty four parking spaces, and he needs two of those for the upstairs living, so that leaves twenty two. Okay, so twenty two times four.
Eighty eight.
Is eighty eight, so he has enough room for eighty eight, however, site plan review. Prove sixty fours, so he can keep the sixty four seats, he doesn't have to have site plan review. If he increases, that's when he talks to you about site plan review, because that's an expansion of the approval. Okay, so, and so what you're saying, because he got sixty four seats, and that included twenty four outside and forty inside. He encloses the porch, he doesn't have to worry about additional parking, because it's already counted, and he already has enough.
Right.
So you can have sixty four. You can, you can have sixty four seats and not have to have site plan review.
Right.
All you, you will need, in order to impose it, you will need a building permit.
Need a land use permit, and he does need a land use permit for, for what he's got there is the roof.
Why do I need that, though?
It's not.
Because it's required.
It's, it's for a set.
Building.
So I need to get a, I need to get a, um.
Building.
I need to get a survey?
No.
Yes.
She said I need a survey.
Well, I said if it's gonna change the footprint, and.
Not changing the footprint.
However, it overhangs where, where the edge of the deck.
We have a permit for a ten foot deck, and I have ten feet width, you can measure it. It's ten feet with the roof, the deck is happened to be ninety.
Okay, well, I'll send Ryan out to it.
Yes.
Let me.
If there's no chance of this addition approaching into the setback.
No, there isn't.
I mean, you have to worry about a survey for that?
I don't think, I don't think so.
So here, here. Here's the problem, and this. People don't ever want to have a survey, and so, and we frequently have people, previously, we did things differently than what they said they were gonna do. Um, and it turned out that they were setbacks, and I, I don't think that's gonna be a problem here. So the question is. Are we gonna waive? So recommending that I waive the survey for him in this circumstance.
I wouldn't say that's, that's fair, as long as you're gonna build what you say you're gonna build, you can't, you know, say you're gonna build an apple and build an orange.
It's already built.
But I think that the land use permit. Before he gets it, should say. That it's only for sixty four seats, and that, that it's. Whatever else Carol wants.
Right.
Like, like they just, if we, if we increase the space, you know, then increase our seating.
So it says.
Require that, but it won't, it still might not require the land use permit if the deck is where, if the, if the roof line goes ten feet.
No, it still requires a land use permit for the roof.
For the roof.
Why?
It's, it's called a building permit, it's not called a lane.
So it's, okay, I need a building, I need a, I need a ser, a four to five hundred dollar survey for a roof.
No, we're saying, we're saying. You need, you need the land use, uh, permit, which is, which is a building permit, just that you can build a roof. Okay. Alright.
Land use permit, so it's called.
Okay, but I'm getting ready to survey.
Okay, the discussion with the survey is, I think, still ongoing.
Okay, alright.
Um, you know, my, my thought on that is, is you say. That you can take the risk, and if you don't supply a survey, we found out that it's encroaching. You risk us having to come in there and say, you have to rip this down, that's your risk, you know you're that far away from the ser.
I, you know, I mean, I understand.
Okay.
I mean, you're representing that you're not gonna approach into the setbacks.
Well, I mean, if it does encroach into it, if it happens to be more than, than the ten feet, then I will waive that on my end, I'll just say, yeah, probably. Gonna have to get a survey, because that's what you guys need. I mean, you can obviously see it's way far away from the setback, it's like not even close. I mean, you know, you could draw that fine line, you guys, it's up to you guys, but, no, it's, but still, it's an expensive thing, it's time consuming. And, you know, it's, it's obviously that where, where it's located, it's not, it's no approach, it can't be, it's ten feet, ten feet, I have a, I have a ten foot, you know. There's a driveway, there's a driveway there, it's a curb.
I think we can, we can put it in the land use permit, the stipulation that it has, that we, we are going to waive it.
Well, just recommend to me that I, I waive it, and, and he's gonna assume the responsibility, lead the responsibility.
And, but that should be in the land use permit.
That's fine, I agree.
Should we have Ryan go and measure it?
Still, yeah, I feel still measure.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I mean, he's not a surveyor, only a surveyor determined.
Exactly, yeah.
Right.
But I, I think if there's plenty of room over there.
Right.
Because he won't, it's obvious, then there's gonna not gonna be a problem, but it's not, if, if it's really close, Ryan's gonna say, hey, it looks kind of close to me, and.
There have been a lot of people who did not, got a waiver, said that they were not close, and then they turned out that they were approved, so.
If you're close, you're close, then you're gonna have to come back in, that's right.
That's why we stopped just granting waivers.
You know where your pins are?
Um, well, the, the Legion has a fence, that are the line, that's the line. I already know that's the line, put their fence. See where their fence is. Smile the way.
A lot of people know which line, and they're just thinking it isn't the line.
Well, okay, so they would put it more that way or less that way, which were both, they do reasonably.
Should be a foot on there.
Sure should be.
On your, yeah.
It could be a foot on their side.
Right, so it's even more than. You know, so, yeah, that would make it a foot more.
It would make it less. But that's alright, like I said, it just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ryan, Ryan, come on, check it, it's not a big.
Okay, so what do I need at this, like, for what I'm doing right now, I don't need anything, so I don't have more than sixty four seats on the house.
But if you're gonna close, if you're gonna close it in.
But I'm only gonna close it in temporary this winter, I don't know if I'm gonna keep it for, that's another thing. What should we do about that?
Well, we need to make sure it's safe, so have that.
Well, the site, you know, if he, if he says it's safe, then we light it up in there and get it started, or, you know, I mean.
I think, once you get your land use permit. You, as part of the land use permit, you're gonna fill out what you're gonna do.
Same, building permit or land use?
Same, both the same.
Same thing.
Same thing.
So when you fill out your land use permit, you're gonna fill, fill that out completely, and on there it's gonna ask you your questions about what you're doing.
Right, right.
And then you can submit that.
I have that right here.
And any, and, but you all have to come and see Carol, she's not here.
Yes.
And, and once you submit that, any drawings or anything that you have, you know, I want to heat it, I want to put lights in it, I want to do this. If you want to put all that stuff in there, then Ryan will come over and inspect it once it's done, and if it meets what you said, and if it's far enough, then you're, you're okay, but if it's not. Then you're, then you're have, gonna have to probably stop using it, and then come in for a full site plan review.
It's okay for an outdoor.
It's okay for an outdoor deck to wait as now?
No, it is, no, I don't need to do nothing, it's, you know, not opening up the can of worms.
If, if, if you.
About this.
Yeah, but I think you can, I mean.
No, I mean, I don't see like that, I mean, I know that, it's not open enough, just saying, it's just, and plus, maybe at the same time, I, I ask for more seating, right?
No, 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 you're gonna have your six, four seats.
More seating.
So I need a full site plan for more seating, so what is that required?
Fill them up.
Yeah.
It doesn't require a survey, though, right?
A full site plan might, yeah.
Possibly, I mean, you can ask.
I don't know what you want to do.
For an existing business?
Yeah, yeah, you have to fit through a site plan review, you're gonna need to fill out an application for that.
Right.
Which is different than a land use.
I got you, know that.
Okay, then we have to notify all the authorities.
Right, I got you, okay, I got it.
You're probably gonna need to survey.
Right.
Then you're gonna come in here for, for a hearing, we opened up a public comment.
Exactly. Exactly.
Alright.
Exactly, alright.
And it, and it reviews everything.
Yes.
You know, your parking, your lighting, your signage, your, your setbacks, it's.
Big can of worms.
Everything's on the line.
Because there's different things going on now.
Yep, since two thousand and seven.
Upgrade at that point, start upgrading software and keep my own.
Be referring to.
Yeah.
Anything, anything that might have been. You know, pain.
I mean, it depends, we can't, we can't just talk in a vacuum until we know what it is.
Alright, yeah, no. That's we. So.
You're gonna get a hold of Carol for your land use permit?
Yeah, he has an application.
It's just that I didn't do it because we talked about this. I'll bring it in tomorrow, fill it out and give it to you. Yeah, right.
Yep. And the land use permit will tell you how many seats he has, right, so we have.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Alright, thank you.
Alright, good talk.
So you know, the, the fire chief says is different than what you're approved for.
Sure.
Fire chief is just looking at space.
Sure.
And so, X, X number of square feet means you can have so many people in that space.
Right.
It's not like how many chairs or tables.
Exactly, and doesn't.
All different.
I got, I noticed, yeah, because he, like I said, he gave me ninety seats, but that doesn't mean I could use. You know, because you guys have to agree with that.
Yeah, he just says that.
How many you can fit per square foot.
Like, capable that space.
Exactly of this, I got you. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug, good luck.
Good one.
Continued review and possible amendments to zoning ordinance, land use plan ordinance, um. We already talked about the general use, I think the consensus was to split it into every group three zone.
Okay, so we have two zones then.
Two zones at the moment.
I missed out on.
You were wanting to make sure that Joe could be part of.
Okay.
Final, whatever you decide.
Okay, did you have some concerns, Joe?
I want my land estate generally used the way it's always been.
Yeah, there's not.
Fifteen feet front of there.
At the moment, there's no, no changes proposed, uh, we're just gonna make two zones because.
We don't have a different regulation.
Well, for the moment, we haven't proposed, proposed anything different.
It will be changed, there will be a lot of different regulations.
Eventually.
And what I, I talked to Clark, they're not in favor.
Well, I think, you know, wherever.
They have three hundred and fifty, fifty, they have a four hundred acre there. They're not favorable.
So why are we changing?
I understand, but. Whatever comes out of this, Route Three is gonna be the most lenient zone in town, most likely.
Will it be less lenient or more lenient, more stringent?
Oh, I mean.
What's more stringent?
I think people.
Less stringent.
It's gonna be less stringent, because people are, well, they didn't come and talk at the hearing, but.
Because, I remember right, about sixty years ago, one of my neighbors came up, wanted to put twenty-eight apartments on one acre of land, beside one of my houses.
Okay.
See, and her, and her. And her architect said it was a great idea, to have that land wetland. Some of the people in board were able to go along with it at the time.
The architect's always gonna say it's a good idea.
But some of the board was, it sounded a great idea, but it's against town regulations. It's less stringent, they probably could have done that, they had no regulations. That's the point I'm worried about, would you wanna have twenty-eight units beside your house and they go land?
Twenty-eight units on one acre?
Yeah.
Can't do it?
Yeah, I don't think.
I know they couldn't, that's why she walked out and, and a half.
I thought she was gonna put a duplex, Joe, I don't think she was talking.
No, I asked. What do you think, it wasn't duplex, it was all. You know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, that's, that's why I said, I know, I thought she wanted just a duplex.
No.
I don't know how it turned into twenty-eight.
Plus eight, twenty plus units on it, he showed me the blueprint and the person. I'm not lying, I'm not bullshitting.
Okay, you're amazing, Joe, I just, my collection's different, that's all, I'm not. I'm not looking to make the hard.
Can I ask what we're doing, why we're making these changes?
Because I think people are concerned this general use zone is part of the Main Street district, and. People feel that we should have more stringent land use controls on the Main Street area.
So, who's the people, I mean, have they come in, have, have they, have they sent letters to the town, have they, I, I guess I'm just curious, just the. How's all getting going here?
Well, they have complained to me.
Verbal.
Yeah.
Nothing in writing.
Correct.
So if they're not gonna put it in writing, it's not a complaint.
Okay, well, I mean, what?
Or a suggestion, I mean, I, look, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to find out.
And I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just.
I, I'm, I'm just saying that a lot of times. Things get verbal instead of getting factual, and to me, if someone cares enough to do something, I think they ought to submit. Something in writing saying, I'm Paul Bowden, and I would like to see this changed because, so we have, have the reasons for, and have a little. Subjective information instead of.
So let me, let me give you an example, if I may.
Yeah.
So people have expressed concerns about, um. You know, hotels, four-story hotels on Main Street. Um, you know, concerns about four-story apartment buildings on Main Street. So, you know, there's talk about having tighter regulations for hotels. Um, on Main Street, but it might, so it might be good for Main Street, it might not necessarily be good for Route Three, because that's a hotel. You know, a lot of hotels that need upgrading up there, so you wanna give an incentive.
But I think the horse is out of the barn here, I mean, you know, we've allowed, it seems to me like. Whoever's done it now has a, a set of jump on things, and they're built now and nobody else can do it, because. Some of the people who moved in here may not, not like it.
These hotels are general resident and, and different zones than general use, these over here.
Say, say that again?
Hotels are going there and now, not in general use.
Some of them. This one's in Village Commercial over here.
They couldn't be there if they weren't allowed in the ordinance, they wouldn't be allowed to be built.
They're allowed, so, so the next thing is, is a proposal to change that, so.
But I mean, like I said, uh.
Okay.
I. When I take a look, because I take a look at. The zoning board, are they having a lot of people coming in asking for variances or special exceptions? If they can look at, has anyone submitted anything in writing saying the reasons why, you know? I hear stuff on the street all, all day long.
Yeah.
About everything in the town, but it doesn't get changed just because I hear it.
A lot of stuff is based on emotion, not really.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, so, a lot of people talk to you, and un- unless they're willing to. Something with it, then it really is just talk. And that's, you know, that, that's the way I look at it, I, I'd say to change a lot of regulations if we don't, if it's really not a. Big outpouring or out crying for, you know?
Joe?
I proposed about twelve years ago, I have a general use for downtown, general use for three, but I was told to buzz off.
Well, I was here then, Joe, and I most certainly didn't tell you to buzz off.
They want, they wanna keep it all general use, that general use goes up towards crazy one time.
Well, we're, we're looking at that same issue however many years later. And I think it's a valid, a valid discussion, you know, I can't say I'm all for it, I'm all against it, but I think it's a valid discussion.
I agree with you.
But if, if we do it.
Sorry, we're not in public participation at this time.
But I think if we do it, I, I think it, it, it needs to be done with.
With reasons.
With reasons, with changes proposed for each zone, so instead of just making two zones that are exactly the same. Um, to prepare us for making changes down in the future, people I think are gonna be, I would be wary of that, I don't know if I'd vote for that. We have two general use zones, A and B, and they both have all the exact same setbacks, uses, allowances. I, I just don't see the point of that, I would rather get down and say, okay, if we make a, a Route Three zone and a downtown zone. Go right through every use, do we wanna allow family, uh, single-family detached units in both of those zones? Yes or no, I'm not offering opinion, I'm just saying. Duplex, hotels, blah, 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 all the way down.
And I agree with that, yeah.
And then go through and say, okay, what do we want for minimum lot size, should they be same or different? Um, uh, setbacks, same or different, percent lot coverage ratio, same or different, height, same or different. And, and get on and say, okay, these in all the two zones you wanna do, A and B, so I think we have to go through the whole process and look at them, or we just.
We wouldn't have had our, half the problems of Main Street, we'd had a separate Main Street zone over the past ten years, that was made clear.
Yeah, but you're calling these problems on Main Street.
A problem.
The problem.
They're not a problem, Joe, because the people in this town voted for these ordinances that said, this is what they want to allow to have, and, and, and they knew what they wanted.
Recommendation to the planning board.
But, yeah, yeah, that's right, but they voted for, same thing as you vote for stuff in the selectmen representative, sorry, the budget committee, whatever, you vote for those, you know? Do I personally think that half the people realize what they're voting for sometimes?
No.
You know, sometimes, I think they get into the booth and they say, oh, planning board likes this, so here it goes, you know, so it's okay.
Yeah.
Or the budget committee, so, but, but anyway, they did vote that way, and unless we've got a lot of people who are willing to. I don't, I shouldn't say a lot, unless we get some people that are willing to put pen to paper, paper and say, I don't like this in my zone because of. You know, short-term rentals, or a hotel, or whatever you wanna go, a restaurant, strip, but, but, whatever, you know, I don't like them in this because of. And they put, put their name on it, whether it's a business or an individual, then I think at that point in time, or if they come to the ZBA, and they're getting a lot of. Uh, special exceptions or variances, or things like that, then I think we take a look at it, but other than that, I mean. It, to me, it just seems like we're creating stuff.
Joe?
Something over here presented I agree with, don't pass out. But the problems of Route Three and Run Main Street are probably different issues entirely. There's very little land on Main Street, and they've been optimized into, it would be gentified, become gentified in the whole town, but it's developed. We lose our identity, you can see what's going on on Main Street right now. Which I don't like, some of the stuff that's going on, because it makes it look like downtown Boston or Manchester. Is that what you want it to look like? Route Three is a different issue, been closed for the past, nineteen seventy-three, they put ninety-three in. A lot of businesses have closed, some have. Been taken away, some have been taken over by the state, but I am in the domain, myself, one of them. So there are different, there are different areas of problem, because Route Three is around Main Street. We should look into that also in the study.
Can I just offer an example?
Yeah.
We, we just had, had the, the hearing on the place across the street, which was three stories. And they could have built four, because that's allowed there, and there was a lot of pushback. On the fourth story because of how close it is to Main Street, how it would be blocking the view, um, from behind, it, it, making it look like Boston. We hear all kinds of things about not going to four stories. Would it be? Uh, a good idea to limit, uh, any building within X feet of Main Street, whatever that number is. To be three stories, and then you can have a four-story, like, like if it was Riverwalk, and it's, it's half a mile back from Main Street. Okay, um, but then up on Route Three, maybe go the other way, would there be any problem with having. A five-story building up there, again, so long as it wasn't right up against the highway, but was, was further set back. You know, so long as it, it met, um, uh, firefighting rules and capabilities between water pressure and ladder trucks and. Access and all of that, what would be wrong with a five-story building up? Say where the, the Beacon North is, tear that down and put in a five-story building.
I would, I would point out, we have closest setback to the road on Main Street versus Route Three. In the Village Commercial.
We do.
Yeah.
But we still would allow a four-story building to be in very edge that setback, which is what, fifteen feet?
What's this funny guy?
Fifteen feet.
Fifteen feet from Main Street, you can have a four-story building.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm saying, what if that was three, but what if up on Route Three, if it was, I, I get, I don't know, seventy-five feet back from Route Three. You can have a five or six-story building, again, so long as it was firefighting, water pressure, access, all of it. Just, just like.
I, but, so you're kinda making the argument for splitting it into two zones.
Oh, I am, but with, with different.
Right.
Just to split it into two identical zones.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm thinking going forward as well, because as time goes on. And I just wanna have, I'm just thinking we should be prepared for what's gonna be.
Have we had any requests for?
People, people will be more supportive if they know.
We must change yourself.
But we have. Why, why we?
I requested it ten years ago.
Reactive, first of all, I don't believe we should be reactive, we should, we should look at that property across the street as an example. If he came in with four stories, he meets the regulations, we approve four stories right there, you said you don't want it, I know I didn't want it. You were happy that it was three, okay.
No, no, I, 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 I wasn't. But, you know, I.
It meets the requirement.
That's it, but I, and, and that's what I, that's why I'm. Stick my foot in my mouth and say, look, you know, the horse is out of the barn, we allowed so much to happen, I mean, I certainly didn't like. This thing looks awesome, but it takes away the view of the mountain, Loon Mountain used to look nice, all, all, all trees to me, but. You know, now we got slopes over there, so, you know, as, as a local native, sometimes I, I look over there and say, you know, you used to be able to see the whole mountain, so. Isn't it kinda subjective as to what looks good to one person versus what, what looks good to another? I mean, it's, they, do you change your regulations based on, a- and, and I'm trying to be frank with you, I mean, what you want or what I want, which, which is. Probably different sometimes, or what Jimmy wants, or Joe wants, so how do we, how do we subjectively do that in the best interest of the town? Unless we get the town involved and say, look, we're thinking about doing that, are we gonna have public hearings, say, look, we're thinking about doing this, and should we have public hearings so people can?
We have.
We're gonna have a public hearing, I mean, we're not just gonna change like, oh.
But that, that's why I'm.
We, we'll get people weighing in on those, but we need to propose something.
Right.
We can't just sit back and say we're gonna have a public hearing and people can complain about anything they want. That just doesn't get us anywhere, if we propose something and they come in and say, we'd love to have a three-story minimum on Main Street for, for the first fifty feet. Okay, but up on Route Three, we're fine if it goes up to five stories, again, so long as it's fifty feet back. If we propose that, if people come in and argue against that and tell us we're crazy and they hate that idea, I'm fine when they vote no. And they vote no, I'm fine with that, but let's, let's, let's take that example and all the things that you didn't like about it.
Oh, I think.
And, 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 and do something about it, and the whole idea that the horse is out of the barn is no, it isn't, because. He chose not to go four stories, which I was very happy about, but the next guy, whoever that is, guy, girl, is gonna come in and say four stories. And we're gonna look at the regulations right here, and say, four stories is fine, we all hate it, but it's fine.
Right. Joe wants to say something here.
Basically, what I said, I mean, by comment, I didn't like it, it's begratary, we can't stop it. So we gotta do some kind of thing to help mitigate the over. Indolence to what's going on in Main Street.
So we have the, but, part of the reason is that height restriction, and correct me if I'm wrong, but. Height restriction put the way it was was because we had, we were going with the ladder truck, we had the ladder truck. First of all, it was, we didn't have a ladder truck, and we said, no, you know, we're, it, it's, it was hard for the fire department to protect those higher levels. So then we got the ladder truck and said, okay, we're gonna allow people to be at that height. So that was, that was part of the reason for acquiring the ladder truck, so if we don't let buildings come in that are. Higher than four stories, when we can reach them with a ladder truck, isn't that kinda, maybe?
Yeah, it's all about the aesthetics of Main Street.
Let me ask you something, you like the way, the aesthetics, the way it sounds like it looks now? Okay.
If I wish I had joined the planning board ten years ago.
Well, and, and it's gonna change for now and then, too, you know what I'm saying?
The idea of restricting it on Main Street. And we should present something instead of.
I think businesses in towns should be on Main Street, and you, you, you look at a lot of businesses, they have three and four-story buildings on their Main Street.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, so, why, it, it seems to me that we're, we're, I wanna say catering, but we're. We're, we're going to the way of a, a, a few people that wanna, and I don't know who the people are, there are people who say, you know, they didn't want that, that height. To me, the Main Street is the Main Street, I mean, you know, you know, if you're going, if you wanna go one or two streets back. Now houses back and say they can't have one or two houses back that can't be that tall, you know, I mean.
Well, yeah, but there's own residential, so you probably not.
Right, so you're probably not gonna, you're gonna have a hard time doing that anyway, that's why there's own residential, but to me, the Main Street, if you look at a lot of. I don't care where you go, they're, they're, they're pretty tall on Main Street.
If you think about it, this stuff by limited real estate, it's two house blocks, when we bought the two house blocks. You can put the same exact thing they had here, same eight, same amount of density. We wanna, after that, if you're true, they wanna keep some of them onto the old town. I give you guys, cause you remember back, or you, none of us remember back, but in nineteen hundred. From the back of the mill right across, all the way down Puma was all field, no sheep farm. Cause in nineteen hundred, New Hampshire was eighty five percent farm, eighty five and fifty percent forest. New Hampshire now statistically, according to the, the North County Council, is eighty five percent forest and fifty percent farm. So the density in woodland is getting much greater than nineteen hundred. So things will change no matter what we do, we're gonna be guys, there's gonna be places, yeah, whips, that was come in and say, we wanna make the area city, and it will.
And that's what I'm saying, OJ, I would love to see Lincoln say the way it was twenty years ago, twenty five years ago, you know, I really would, but. I can't do that, because it's, you know, it, it's growth, you know, you, you can't, you just, we, we can't stop growth. So how do we, how do we live with it, you know, uh, I mean, yeah.
And detectives.
I, I am in no way looking to stop growth.
We are, well, but we don't have controlled growth ordinances, and what you wanna do is you wanna put a controlled growth ordinance.
Not that much.
Not that much, we don't have a, a real true controlled growth ordinance, cause it limit a, a true controlled growth. Well, the law towns have controlled growth ordinances, like OJ's talking about, but they are very substantive and they, they really dictate. Grow in a year and how, you know, the height of the buildings is like, like you're talking about, but. I mean, I, I take a look at Lincoln now and we are. A changed town, I mean, it, the people, the hustle and bustle that's in here, the traffic that's here. I mean, the people that are here, the amount of money that you're paying for houses, in, in, in my opinion, just, it's crazy what people are paying for houses around here in Lincoln, you know? Uh, it, 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 it's just nuts and I don't think we can stop any of that, you know?
Not looking to.
But I mean, so how fair is it then to say, okay, you guys get in under the door, or you guys, you know, you want to, you're taller buildings. You gotta end up in the door, but now, now we're not gonna allow anymore to do that, so is that fair?
So, you know, we're still on the, splitting the general use, so I'm gonna pull the board to see if wanna go forward with it, forward it, with it or not. And then we'll move on to the, the uh.
What are the advantages and disadvantages of, of doing that? If you don't mind me asking, who, who, who put this thing together that said that they wanted to do this? I, I, I don't know.
I proposed it and, you know, got on the agenda.
Okay, so tell me what the advantages and your, your opinion are.
Zone is tech, is part of Main Street.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
This, this section that's general use up here is technically part of the main, main downtown area.
The section meaning from where like. The liquor store up that way?
That's general use.
It's a lovely, it would make you more stringent.
So now you wanna change that to fill it center? I was asking you, I'm sorry, Joe, I was asking Jimmy for his, why he submitted it, so I just, I wanted to hear.
I mean, I'm thinking the downtown area is growing, so it's gonna grow differently than Route three. So that's, you know, that's my.
I can see trying to do something to open up the highway a little bit.
Difference between the Village Center and the general use is really the setback. The front setback is five feet from the Village Center, it's fifteen feet in the general use. So that's probably the most dramatic.
So, yeah, that's, I thought it was closer to fifty.
Why don't we change it to Village Center, but setbacks fifteen feet, that's a lot of problems.
I mean, we tried to do some things like even when. We tried to put that, make sure that all of the commercial buildings hit the road in back of it, so we could have another.
That wasn't them, that was my idea, it wasn't mine.
Whoever it was, Joe, I'm sorry, he, he was there, there was a plan to that, but. And here we are today, we're, we're, we're no closer to getting any of that, cause I think now there's still some that don't have it. You know, along the back there, so, I mean, the hotel, it's there, doesn't, you can't get from one to the other, can you? So can you get through the hotel along the back, is that?
No, I mean, you can get to the bank.
But you can't get right along the back, so we did try, we've tried to do some things, you know, and, and look, I'm hot. If you told me today that you were gonna take everything away and that it was gonna go back to the way Lincoln used to be.
Well, the way you, Lincoln used to be is you could build anything of any height.
Because they liked the, they liked the character, you know?
Okay, well.
Low lane wasn't a premium back then, that's what.
If we did it the way it was back then, you'd have, had Hampton Inn, but you'd have him ten feet away off of Main Street, you'd have.
Well, the problem was that all the other land, like up, up there were, were. Some of the hotels first started building, when Little Mump started building, all now, started coming down and said, oh, we wanna be closer to the town. You know, so that's really what happened, but when this hotel here in the back started, I think that's what, when it changed. Everything like, because it started bringing it closer to Lincoln, and then once that went, it. I mean, I don't necessarily say I like it, but I, I'm a, I'm a person who believes. You know, the people have to be able to do certain things with their land too, so I, I get, you know, I get a little confused myself. When I start thinking about that.
Well, I think our job is to help guide that growth through ordinance change. Not to just come in and say, well, this fits, that doesn't fit, cause everybody makes it fit. But I think that we need to be proactive and, and you know, you go back and say, well, it's not fair, well, okay, it's also not fair for every restaurant that was built with no parking, like, like. Okay, or the one next to it, high nine, or the one next to it, the pizza, I mean, they don't have parking.
We allowed that.
But if we keep allowing that. Yeah, if we keep allowing that. It's not good for the town. Now, we're gonna make it a co-our business, well, no, first of all, we can't, second of all, we don't want, that was part of the town and they've been established and all of that. Now, so does that mean if it's not fair to make any other restaurant ever to put in parking? I, I would disagree with you on that premise. We have to make changes to make the town better, more livable, more drivable.
Well, if you wanna make more, more livable, more drivable, we start up.
Would start right here, would start right here, because. This guides us.
Sometimes I'm overregulating, it's not the best way to approach that.
No, I agree.
Next ten years, we're gonna have five to ten thousand cars coming out of South Peak every day on busy weekends. Definitely onto one twelve, but always fast moving now, and Forest Ridge. And Paula Brook.
And they've all been approved.
I know, that's what we like here, but it's been approved.
I mean, if I was gonna do some changes on town, I can tell you, I would take, work, think that the town would be working with the state. To improve the traffic corridor through the Main Street, like, I don't know what would be done, but you know, we are building and continue to build. And we don't seem, we've had the same, we changed it, made that center death lane, it's in it, that's, that's really has a center death lane. You know, but it's, you know, those are the types of changes that I think are, are warranted quicker than. Quicker than changes and, and the ordinance is there, I mean, we, we need better traffic mitigation, we really do. You know, I mean, that, to me, the town, the town needs it. What are we gonna do when the state comes along, OJ, and says, okay, we're gonna three lane this, or four lane, whatever they were gonna do through here, we're not gonna have a thing to say about it. Why don't we start working there if we want? They can do what they want, but I mean, i- if you take a look, look at the Main Street of Concord, what they did, that, you know. They did traffic calming measures, that was a madhouse to go through Concord, you know, now they, they actually put things in the middle there. You know, so I mean, to me, one of the biggest things that, besides the water and sewer stuff, but things that people really. Care about is the traffic in town and this Main Street is, is just, I think we should do something, if we're gonna spend some time on some. I'd like to see that. Focus on that, because that will allow us to handle some of the things that are coming up. If we don't focus on that, all the stuff that's going around us is gonna just keep building and that's gonna get worse.
Yeah, were you here when Phil Grimmie, Little Mump suggested? Put a road coming off the route.
That we're, we're talking about. I, I know, but let's, let's, are we gonna do this or not?
So, yeah, I mean, I tried to ask that question ten minutes ago, so. Great, so, hold the board, Joe, do you wanna consider splitting general use?
I'll consider talking about it, doesn't mean I want it approved or not approved.
So you wanna have a hearing on it, approve it to public hearing? I'd say yes.
I thought we were gonna discuss it, not move it to public hearing.
Was it because of warrant for, I mean, we've been discussing it, so I mean.
We've been talking about it, I, I would be ready to move it to public hearing when we have two defined zones. With two separate sets of regulations for each of those zones, um, to make them different. To just label two different zones with the exact same criteria, no.
Well, we can, we have two different zones, we can keep adding and deleting, the requirement of these zones we go.
So you know.
I mean, that's my idea.
Anyway, if, at, at least have one thing that's different, we say as we go, let's, let's start that process.
If we start, if two zones both have cable, that data will be actually the both. But if you progress, we can add zones, in fact, if we wanna add something between the next time meeting, after we have the zone in. We can add stuff in and it will be bounding till the next time we even leave the road on it, remember I pointed that out here, here, some years ago. It becomes law, until then, they can't be less stringent with the way approved, we, we, the ordinance we pass.
Okay, Cal.
I think we got advice on that, and he said no. He, uh, our town attorney said, you know, the window in which you can oppose zoning changes and plant. The day after town meeting, the rose, okay, you have it going to effect until the following town meeting. There's basically statutory window of opportunity for you to do that, but you can't do it before that.
What you can do under state law, which I researched, excuse me, I'm Joe. Under state law, if you have a, a, an ordinance put in, you wanna make it more stringent, you can choose though. Which would lie though, is to be stated will be the state that let's, the, the most stringent one. Not the less, the most stringent one, you would say in effect, until such time, we go around and get the next time meeting, this has been approved by the, by the general court. And the state's speed law.
That's true, but you can't just do it the day after the town meeting, like, that's what she's saying. But you can't do, there's a window and that, that takes effect, it's not the day after.
No, but if you have to have the meeting, it's got, we can put the, put that in.
Well, you'd have to ask an attorney, sure.
Yeah, we're not proposing anything, just get, so I don't think.
I, I'm in favor of having a, a discussion that looks at two different zones with two different sets of criteria. And not going to public hearing until we as a board agree on what those two sets of criteria should be that we bring to the public area.
I just don't wanna see a whole Main Street full of hotels, you know how much I like that stuff? This is ridiculous, this thing across the street shouldn't happen.
But he's talking off, he's not talking about me.
We're talking about making two separate zones general use.
Yeah, that's what it takes.
And this dome over here, you won't come at a general use.
It's not general use, we're talking about.
So you said, it's not general. But they could build that same thing right up there.
So while they, they couldn't, because you, they need, they can't get those uh dimensional waivers, general use.
And, and this doesn't take into consideration anything that's already been approved, like the hotel up there and.
It's too, putting too much on these little lots, that's big.
There are a lot of people around, like to make it greater density in the lot we have now.
That's the rage in pocket.
I'm gonna vote no, because I somewhat agree with what OJ said, so Steve agrees with you. And you agree with Joe.
I say yes, but not to just a blank hearing.
So you're a mate, you're a mate.
No, I'm a definite, we should, we should come up with a.
You want, yeah, but you want, if you're gonna create your zones, you want a definitive, you want.
You want to define.
Jim's saying he wants to have a public hearing without having any of that, right? You say you just wanna do it.
I just want to, but he wants to differentiate between.
So we, we would take more meetings to be able to be able to come up with that.
One on regular meetings, yeah.
Work session.
Yeah, a work session meeting, but that's the agenda item.
You do something up on Route three and take some of the heat off Main Street, maybe.
Nobody wants to go through Route three, cause Little Mump is over here. I know, that two mile makes a big difference, right, trying to sell property too. Million dollar locker over here to, you know, two, three hundred thousand lawn in Route three, to be discrepancy.
I mean, what if you even look at the business use schedule?
That would be the perfect place to start.
As OJ suggested, and.
Well, I, I know we allow mobile home parks in the general use, so it might be okay on Route three, probably not okay.
Example, let's not have mobile home parks on Main Street.
We already voted one time to have any car dealerships, this area, if you're on the board, then that happens.
We incorporate like a larger setback for certain structures.
Like, for example, you know, you, um. Hotels or the. The commercial buildings, you wanna, you wanna have a different type requirement in the Village Center or the general use. On this side, in the Route one twelve side, wanna have a greater setback. Right now, in the Village Center, the setback is five feet. It's fifteen.
But you already got people that fly foot, everyone along is.
I mean, that was, the idea is you have a quaint downtown, you have buildings close to the street.
Be walkable downtown. And if you look at places like Willington and Plymouth, they're all right on. A lot of, a lot of.
But they have about twenty feet of the street.
They're right on the sidewalk. Let me tell you something, they're not a sidewalk that's ten feet wide.
The setback is from the property. Not the edge of the road.
Four foot sidewalk.
Look, the town of Woodstock, they probably as well loaded, but it's only five feet wide.
Lincoln, and Woodstock, a lot of buildings, they'll be tearing down because it's standing value. Just like which you, just like which you admire.
It is, it, it's actually very dangerous to have what we have here, because I can tell you. When you walk down to Main Street and people have those little signs out there, those little flags, and you gotta walk out around them, or they get. Up, up there by Tom Tremblay's, where they just did a great job on uh that beautiful little food service place. There's now tables out there with umbrellas in the summer, and you're gonna walk out into the road to get around them, because the seats are out on the sidewalk. So I mean, it is dangerous at times to be able to do, to have those pedestrian closely. You know, to Main Street places, but if.
Put this on the agenda for the first meeting in December, in between meetings, we also send Carol ideas as to how the two zones should look. It doesn't mean we have to do anything.
There's Route three, put a pitchfork setback like OJ suggested, from the uh, mountain, not the mountain over there. Where O'Brien owned. All the way down to Jimmy, it's all within fifty feet of the river, just about.
But I suggest that we also put it on the town's website and say, hey, look, planning board's considering looking at these, this.
Put it on the agenda every time, I mean, on the website, every time we post an agenda.
But it doesn't really go into the detail of it, it just says.
But, but we have people here right now who wanna speak, but we're not opening to public hearing, but it's a work set, we will at the end, but it's not during a work session.
Well, this is, this is technically a work session.
It's an agenda item that, that we're not, there's no, there's no public hearing portion of this agenda item as would be with a, with a, a. Land use plan.
She asked, but she had her hand up, so, but did you wanna say something, and, and what's your name?
My name is Kim Halloran, I just had a question, do we have a town plan, like five years out, when we want our town?
We have a master plan. For updating, we're gonna start updating it in twenty twenty four.
And as part of that plan, I would think there are zoning suggestions for what we want to see in downtown versus. Outside of town, the definition of what is town center, uh, to free and that, so we know what our plan and our road. And how we can kind of retain the rustic community and, and look and feel that.
We'll never be a rustic community again. I'll say that forcing us out, you can't always live here anymore.
As soon as, like, some of the businesses downtown might close, like, for example, Alpine Village, it's, it's got a nice lot, we don't want another. As soon as like some of the businesses downtown might close, like for example, Alpine Village, it's, it's got a nice lot, we don't want another hotel there, right? We want to, you know, try and put some of those restrictions in and have that zoning so that that reinforces what that town master plan is supposed to look like.
But you know, there's a lot of people that would like to see some things grow too, business people want to have more business. You know, I mean, i- isn't that?
What's your name?
Hi, I'm Sonia Palmer, I'm a local resident. First of all, thank you guys for all the work you're doing, so, you know, I wish we had more people that would do the work you guys are doing and involved. But I, I think if you guys do what you're talking about and have Main Street zoning different than Route three. Probably solve some of the problems with the Hampton Inn, it'll be more attractive, you know. Put with building that wanted to there, because it allows them more zoning for the type of building they're trying to put over on Route three versus downtown. So that zoning allows them to build the building, and then, you know, you build it and they'll come and you create a zone over there where there is more. You know, supermarket, more grocery stores, more commercial use stuff than it's zoned that way. And then we can maintain at least what, that, um, the charm that Lincoln has.
There currently is up on Route three, it is a, what's the special district that it is, what's called?
Business economic front.
Economic revitalization. And, and that, you know, so we, we tried to do that to encourage some of the more development up there, and unfortunately, nobody is.
That's a relief from land use, so that gives you relief from the business enterprise tax.
But, but it's still more than you get when you're down on Main Street, you know, you.
It's, it's pretty minimal, yeah.
I mean, to me, we could do some things that, like that, you know?
In my mind, that's not gonna sway somebody's argument, you're not gonna save enough.
We'll take a look at what we did to Bernie's. Bernie's, we, look at what we did with Bernie's, get them in there.
In the land, that was forty years ago.
Land, the tax, tax relief too.
We had, we didn't have any other difficulty, we didn't, we, mum was even one quarter what it is now.
You know, may, maybe we need to do some, certain things to try and get more business up on that.
Well, it was busy all the time. What happened? No, not just the interstate, it, what happened? It fizzled.
Route three?
Can I make?
Ninety three came in.
Yeah, I mean, it took a, well, it stopped mine and they kept going through, I mean.
I think what happened, people wanted to be closer to Main Street, they wanted to be closer to the Leno.
I mean, at one time, Norm wanted to be.
Hotels that came, the hotels that come, came were new, and they had the nice little, uh, dinettes and everything in them, they were, they were more. Better supplied up on the hotel, they were the quaint little old cabins and hotels that, you know, people looked at, but they really didn't meet the needs of big families and stuff. But where the hotels are around here meet those needs, they can have rooms of joy and stuff, you know, so.
Especially now with broke families, you don't have, you know, you wouldn't put, you know, boyfriend, girlfriend and someone's kids from previous marriage and child in one room together.
But, but you know, take, take a look too, what, what, what's a precedent to me is that, so this, what's name of the hotel just opened up down there, which one is that?
Hampton Inn.
Hampton Inn. You know, it, it's always busy, there's people there now, I mean, you know, so. There is a, a need for, seems to be, people are using it, so it's not like there's not a need for it, or, you know, it would be empty.
I think.
We have, we have Hampton Inn, we have the one by the Hobo, we have, I mean, there's one that's supposed to be going up by the Common Man, and there's one big, look that over here. Plus one Pergosian wants to put in over there, so I mean, this.
People want to stay at the newer property, they just want them in places, try it out.
They threw wicked deals at you when they're brand new too, and then you go stay, stay there two years and it's five hundred bucks a night.
Oh, that's expensive there now.
So, can, can we get back to the, yeah, the turn to use, all right. Can I offer a suggestion? If we, to, to the board.
Okay.
If we, if we put this off for the next meeting, I'll do an Excel spreadsheet that shows all the restrictions that is in the general use zone now. And leave two blank columns next to it, um, in my general use downtown, general use with three. Everybody can put in their suggestion about what you change, if anything, in either one of those proposed zones. And at least put in the column for the village center regulations and a blank column next to that for anything that you want to see changed, because we already talked about ten, uh, five feet going back to either ten or fifteen. For the, for the front. Well, and, and, and then let people, um, did everybody know how to work in Excel?
Yes.
Yes?
Kind of.
I do it all day long, every day, so to me, it's back and you know what happens, but, um, if I send that out, if, if people respond back to Carol. With the, with their filled in spreadsheet. And even if you, if you don't want to do it on computer, you just take a pencil and print it out.
Print it out, take a pencil, yeah.
Print out and put yes and no, and ten feet or five feet, um, I'll compile that into a, a, a combined spreadsheet, and we can send it around before the next meeting. Somebody knows what, and I'll do it blind, so you don't know what Paul said, what Steve said, you'll see six columns of suggestions. And then we can just kind of go through them from there.
Can we, I, I'm okay with that, can we get some, do we have any feedback from? Residents or from the ZBA that may give us any cases that have had. Then. Sent to the ZBA or any, any taxpayers that may have written in and said, you know, we, we really don't like this, we really don't like that. Just so we can kind of see. Does the board have to keep all our?
No, I thi- I think most of that input, we have, it's been right here in this room.
Right.
That you be in this, you be the setting yourself, like.
I say a lot, I don't remember an answer.
There's not enough clean space over there at seventy percent block coverage, okay? You said that sixteen times in that one area. So, so, so that's number one. Number two is all the things of butters have said in this room regarding all the different things that we've listened to. That's what should guide.
There are those people who yell at Jane and I when we're out and about, like, why did we ever approve the Hampton Inn?
We all hear them.
But you have to think about a lot of the, other different things too.
But that's the input you should listen to, in my opinion. I mean, people, like she said, people writing in and saying, this is what I don't like, it just doesn't happen.
I mean, they come, sometimes they come in specifically just to complain at us, and they act like Jane and I are the ones who did it.
You did, and you're blaming on Bobo.
So I would like to.
I get, not just you, I get complaints about it too.
Oh, yeah.
All right, I'll send you that, Carol, you can dis- disperse it to the board members.
Well, I could, most of them are gonna have trouble printing out anything that's bigger than eight and a half by eleven.
Well, can you print it out and tell them they can pick up a copy?
And then tell you to complete it.
That might be better, yeah. Cause we can just make check marks on it, write your name, mark, just make check marks on it.
However you want to do it, I'll email it to you.
We can all print that.
Do you want it in PDF version, eight and a half by eleven? Then it'd be easy to print out.
You do it in a half by fourteen.
No, that, no.
With the spreadsheet, so either way as well.
Okay.
Okay, so before we go on, are you ladies here for anything specific?
I just wanted to hear about Main Street's.
Two, there's two people in the audience, and they're all in agreement on what they thought they were, so that's a hundred percent.
So consider possible minimum lot sizes per hotel room and possible changes in height restrictions along Main Street slash we're here through one twelve, Cankamagus Highway, so I think we. Cankamagus Highway.
There's three gangs.
Cankamagus, all right, Joe. A lot of people say with an N. But we've really talked about this as, as part of item B. Is there anything else? I mean, does anyone else want to pose anything different to the hotels?
Good start, what's the main?
All right. Uh, moving on to the Pemmy Base Camp.
Can I, before you do that, one other thing, we don't have to discuss it tonight, but at our last meeting, we talked about coming up with a definition of structure. And I think that should be on a future discussion for an ordinance change and putting in land use ordinance, a definition of structure. And it was, uh, specifically to exclude elect- electric transformers, light poles, other such things.
What about rock walls?
Rock walls are considered part of the structure included, and it makes the property owner.
Rock, rock walls above four feet.
But it's, it's created, you know, having a lot of ZVA hearings every time someone wants a rock wall.
Rock walls above four feet are considered structures, everything four feet below.
Yeah, I, I would.
So we're just have, I mean, we, we had a couple of issues where rock walls were on somebody else's property, that's. But no, it's not really a problem.
Okay.
Walkways, like, um, steps, stairs, I consider part of the structure.
No, it's not four feet above, four feet total, including the footings, right?
Yeah, it started from the bottom of the bottom rock, underground.
Right, so includes the footings, if it's four feet including the footings.
I mean, the wall will be about three feet high, or two feet high. Do you agree with that criteria?
Put that on December, it's the thirteenth.
Eight, oh, thirteen.
Move on to the Pemmy Base Camp.
Oh, before we get on to that, I suspect that'll take a while, can, um, can I ask you the question about, uh, about the mobile homes, or one of you received?
Yeah.
But I had brought it up, but then I didn't know how to get in contact with this guy.
Right, so we can tackle now, we can tackle last time.
Well, if we can tackle it now, then we could go on and on and on about Base Camp.
All right.
Yeah, I want, I want these. Okay, so. Yes. Okay, so this, um, this man is in the process of purchasing the Peterson property. You look in the back, this is, is where the best map is, we have four properties out there right there.
What, okay, Malcolm?
Barbara. Ben Peterson, who passed away.
Oh, you're not down. Those cabins.
Those cabins.
There's cabins, there's a house, there's lot three, lot four, lot twenty two and twenty one. Right now, the question is about lot twenty one, there are two beat up mobile homes there. And we talked about, I had a bunch of mobile home questions, but one of them was this. Okay, so these are mobile homes are both out of the, are in the setback areas. Um, he did try to find mobile homes that were exactly the same size, he could not find mobile homes that were exactly the same size. And he, um, but he did find, um, and there are wheels, did find what is filmed. And these pictures, and they're called.
Top models.
Anyway, they're on wheels. With flip skirts underneath them, um, but they're essentially, uh, a little bit smaller than what's there now. So, and, so the question is, um. Would it be acceptable for, this is a mobile home park, there's two.
Yeah.
Mobile homes there, um, to replace those two mobile homes with two of these.
And they're smaller than what?
They're slightly smaller.
And they won't approach any further into the setback.
No, they'll, they'll, they'll probably be, he said he would try to center them in the, in the, where the space is where the lots are now. So they're gonna come in a little bit, because they're a little bit smaller.
I think they're a game play better looking than.
So I mean, we, you know, historically, we've allowed this to happen, just the land use.
Are this saying, this is gonna be in the setback area, so, so.
Be more compliant, we definitely.
Would be slightly more compliant, and so I wouldn't be sending them off to get variances, because, anyway, would this be acceptable, so?
Does anyone have any objections?
I have no problem.
No problem.
No, this is the most great side of the soul.
That's a quick answer. Oh, yeah, did you want us to argue about it a little more?
Well, we did, if you want.
We're just getting warmed up here. All right, Pemmy Base Camp. You changed it to the Pemmy Base Camp since the twenty, two thousand or four approval for Pemmy Space Camp ski warming hut in South Peak by the Planning Board amounts to what would be considered a substantial change or expansion of use. Such that the Pemmy Base Camp needs another site plan review approval, Planning Board voted yes, three to two, review files in response to Attorney Balloon Ma- Balloon President and General Manager Brian Moore. We've all seen the letter.
That letter was July sixth of twenty three?
Yeah.
I just personally haven't seen that letter was. Was a, that's part of this pack, and I hadn't seen this before.
Yeah. Talking about it now. But does anyone feel that we need to have another vote of this?
Need to have another vote?
Well, we've already voted, they've said no. I mean, where do we want to go?
I think we voted, and, and they said no based on that, but that just means.
So they gave us some reasons, hopefully we've read the reasons, looked it over, and obviously we should reconsider, either confirm the vote or, or change it. I mean, it's not like they didn't respond to the request. Are you just getting this letter tonight?
No, 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 I.
Oh, okay.
Got it. But, and I'm rereading it, I mean, I highlighted some stuff in there. I mean, it talks about it being a closed vote, doesn't matter whether it's closed vote or not.
Right, I mean, it did say that, you know.
Be right in the town about how it keeps its records or lack of records for the original site plan approval, and I, I think the town kept records. When I see that the site plan approval was pretty specific. And included, I mean, when you look at through all the information, then you can't find anything that says that. In, in the minutes that it was approved. You can't find anything that says that the, the building permit doesn't says a- as a temporary structure. It doesn't say anything about temporary structure with a debt, when you look at the.
But you know, if I'm getting the letter, the letter does say, you know, reference something that was filed at the registry in two thousand and seven.
But if you take a look at what the town has, we don't.
Signed by Pat Rockrye.
Yeah, yeah, we got that, yeah.
Okay.
It was, it was, it was signed, it was signed by Rockrye, right, but it shows that, take a look at the, take a look at the building permit. Take a look at the, the minutes, none of them say anything about a deck, huh? And I, and I really don't care about the deck, my only, my only thing is what, what's been used for originally, there was nothing that says that it was. Had any detail about what Pemmy Base Camp was to be used for, and.
So there were two building permits.
I mean, when you take a, right, take a look at it, it won't say anything, does that?
It's hard, it's hard to not comply with the building permit if it doesn't say anything.
It doesn't say anything about what, what was gonna be in it, what was to be used for, it doesn't say anything, but it had a deck. Normally, if you're going to have a temporary structure with a big deck, and I agree with it, with, un- under Mr. Rockrye. Uh, the one he signed, it shows a deck, but that doesn't mean the deck was gonna go on it right then. I mean, as I said, when, when I talked to the gentleman who was the food and beverage manager then, he said there was no decked. So, I mean, again, again, so you go by what you believe or what person says, uh, but there's no facts, there's no facts to say. What was being used for, what couldn't be used for, the only facts we have are the building permit. We have the, we don't have any minutes that says that, that it, if it was approved, we don't have. We have these water and sewer tap assessment that says that there was no bars in there, there was no kitchens in there. Um, so if you look at the facts that we have versus what's there today, it's a, it's a change, and that's all I'm saying. It should be clarified as to what they want to use it for.
Use the what it was.
You know, and, and, and that's all I'm saying, we, we, originally this started because of the seat thing. We clarified the seat thing because Ryan went in and counted the seats, and, and ended up, I believe, being less than what the, um, permit was for. So that was clarified, but the use is, is what it is. I mean, they didn't have kitchen downstairs, they didn't have, uh, none of that was, so we have nothing that says, gives us the facts of what was there, what was being, but.
I was in the board with Pat Rockrye, this, this, and so, they were given approval with a. I wasn't aboard with Pat Rockrye this, 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 they were given approval with a deck, it wasn't put in the, on the record, so it's a, it's a town. Make that, but my recollection, the proof with a deck, which will, people could go inside, get food, come out, sit on the deck, and sit in the mud.
It was all right. And I'm.
Never put on the permit, that's that.
I'm just saying that the deck was not part of the permit, okay, and it should have been, if it was gonna be.
Should have, yeah.
A, a deck of that su- substance size would have been part of.
You know, I think the problem with that argument call, since this final site, final subdivision. Plan approved, Pat Rockrye, that shows the deck on it, so you know, you have to focus on the use.
And, and look, I'm okay with a deck, if, if that's the way, if, if that's the way it's gonna be, that's the way it's gonna be, all I'm saying is, it should be. The clarity and the clarification should be as to what is, I mean, from the hours of operation. I mean, now they're operating past ski time when it closes, um, and there's, you know, they got two bars in there, which it never were. I'm just saying, it should be, there's, there should be some clarity as to what it's actually being used for. And what they want it to be, I'm not saying whether I like it or not, or whether anyone else likes it, I'm just saying, there should be some clarity on the town's behalf as to what's there. I mean, we didn't even know who really owned it, and who was leasing it, until we, we started looking at all this stuff, so.
And again, we don't.
Not that it matters, that's your point, it doesn't matter.
It doesn't.
Well, and I understand that, that's fine.
Here, here's my thing, we have a signed, approved recorded plan signed by the planning board.
For a temporary.
Then it, and we have with it a building permit.
For a temporary.
Okay, for, um, a temporary fabric structure to be used for base large facility for South Peak expansion area. Our tax map runs two, three, three point three, in importance with the conditions set forth in the attachment, okay? Um, then the attachment really goes on to talk about.
Temporary structure.
Riot commencement of construction, and talked to Bill Willie, and, I mean, it doesn't talk about, you know, coordination fire chief. It doesn't talk about hours, it doesn't talk about what meals are gonna serve, it doesn't talk about their menu. And then if you look at, it does refer to the application, and if you look at the application. For fabric structure to be used for base large facility for the South Peak expansion area. And again, it doesn't talk about hours, it doesn't talk about bands, it doesn't talk about where people sit, it doesn't.
It doesn't talk, right, but.
So, so wait, wait.
Go ahead.
So, so this is what the planning board of two thousand and six or seven, whenever this was.
It was four when it was done, it was six by then, I think it.
Well, it was seven, two thousand and seven when it was signed, so either way, this is what the planning board approved. You want us to bring in someone because you don't like what the planning board. Wait, wait.
I don't like?
You, you don't like the way. Approved this without any, without all of these details, you should not include all of those details that you are complaining about, okay?
I'm not complaining, I'm.
Yes, you are, you're saying that it doesn't talk about the, uh, was it doesn't talk about the use, it doesn't talk about the, right?
I'm making comments, it's not whether I like it or don't like, I'm making comments.
It doesn't, it doesn't include that, and now you want to go back and make a two thousand and seven decision, include stuff that wasn't in there. And you wanna make the applicant come back in and review those things with the board, I'm just saying that, that, that our, our case is pretty weak.
I think it's dead wrong, I think we have a good case, you guys just sat here with nachos and told him if he was gonna do that, he had to come back in for site plan review. Loom Mountain can sit there, or whoever owns Pemmy Base Camp, and, and they, they filled out, and they made checks payable for the, water and sewer assessments that said that they had no bars, no sinks, no, uh, there was no, um, ice makers, none, I mean, there was none of this stuff, when they filled that back up, that's the form. That they had to fill out to say, this is what we're gonna have, okay? They now have more than that.
They have paid for that, filled up for.
I, I understand, but it, it's a change when you, when they change that, they should have come in, what happened? You know as well as I do what happened, and, and, and I told you this, through attrition, it just started to happen. And I'm not be, belittling or be grading anybody, all I'm saying is, we sat here tonight with, uh, nachos, and we made him come in. We want him to come in if he's gonna change some stuff, but yet we can sit here with this Pemmy Base Camp, and we can just let it go, and I don't think that's fair that the town does.
The last time we talked about this, I thought we agreed that we wanted an update, because whatever's happening there now is. And what's happened on that sheet of paper.
Well, in, in what case, again, point, point it out. Listen on a piece of paper, because.
Well, you show me where it was, you show me where it was discussed in the minutes. They keep saying in the minutes that, that this thing was approved under the two thousand, under the original approval, there's nothing. Nothing in the original approval that talks even about having Pemmy Base Camp there. Find it, Rick Kelly, they, they said, Rick Kelly said it was approved during the, during the original two thousand and four approval, go find it.
For what it was then? That's got two seventy five.
Go find it, cause I gotta tell you what, I've got a.
Signed by the town, and he has the building permit, signed by the town.
Find it, find the minutes where it was approved, you won't find it.
Okay, and, and is Loom Mountain supposed to be reading our minutes?
All I'm saying is, so they can keep changing that to whatever they want, and they don't have to come in. But yet, we, we sit here with all these other people that wanna make changes, and, and, and you want them to come in and do that. Come in for site plan review, come on, be fair, OJ, I mean, you know, it, it, I'm not picking, I'm gonna say, I want them to come in. And say what they're doing with it, that's also.
Old, and they were, they're, they're adhering to what was approved, and we have records of on paper.
They are not adhering to it, because they don't, the, 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 um, the water and sewer tap fees haven't changed since then, they.
Right, but there wasn't a change of use, they added a sink or a bar or whatever.
They had, they had a two bar.
They, they approved to be a base large facility for the South Peak expansion area, what are they now?
If you don't, if, if, if you don't.
Haven't they expanded the rest of, the existing use by paying for the additional water and sewer tap fees?
Does that trigger?
Not a sink, but if they expand the use.
It expanded in what way? It's still, it's still a base large, like, I, I just think, if, this, if, if this goes to court, we're gonna lose.
This was put out by South Peak. South Peak, and said, come to our new and approved, that was just done last year. Hated it, I mean, you know. I have it all over here, South Peak gets a new camp, new base camp, it's put out last year. The new and approved South Peak Base Camp. That race ski often includes a lot of music and open late weekends and holiday weekends, I mean, they, they put this out. They modified it, they advertised about it, it's all new, but yet, did they come to the town?
The years, whenever you do any light in the advertising. Not only have they, it's always, and they just fell into it with you, once people are here, so they'll come and spend their money.
There's just, there's a ton of information that. The attorney is just pulling, I'm an attorney, and, and, and that's the way it's gonna be for Loom. And I think that's, I think that, I think that it's a slap in the face, cause we just sat here tonight. And, and told him what he would need, in order, he would need site plan review if he wanted to make a few changes. Here's a few changes, if you guys aren't, if you guys aren't gonna make him do anything, then you might as well close the planning board down. Cause it is not fair to make, go after him and say that, yet let Loom Mountain do what they want. I'm sorry, it's just not fair. Y'all ought to be ashamed of yourselves, I'm serious.
I thought we wanted an update that was coming along here, so.
We asked them.
They trust them.
They refused it.
And they explained their position and what we have and what. Why there hasn't been a change, as opposed to Mr. Hayward who is in here, and is building or has built without permit. A roof structure, that's a change, and enclo- and is looking to enclose it, that is a change, that, that is. Wildly different, it, it, it goes.
How can you say that?
How, what does his original permit say? What does his original permit say?
What he's saying is, what he did, or is proposing maybe to do, is a change.
Okay, then it needs to take plan review if it's, if it's gonna be more seats and more, and it just needs a building permit if not.
Well, that's pretty much what I'm saying, so this, so if, if they, if, if they change their hours of operation, if they change the, from a, uh, just a warming hut to a bar with two bars and, and a band of players, and they, and they change their hours. I mean, like I said, I don't know how many long, you guys said it, Joe's had here for a while, but, I mean, I can remember the king. The king wanted to come in with live music, we're saying, wait a minute, that's a change, uh, was it Nachos or someone else that came in, wanted to catch live music, we said, that's a change. Over here, they wanted a lot of live music, Jane came in and said, hey, you know, that might affect me, you know, so it has to go through site plan review. This is the same exact thing, because it has the name Loom on it, this whole board gets paranoid, I'm up. I'm not saying that it's not a bad idea what they're doing over there, all I'm asking for, and I said before, was we, we need to, we need to bring it up to date, and we need to get.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Good night, come again. We, we, we need to bring it up to date, and we need to get exactly what's happening there, so, when this board changes, people know. What it was, what it was supposed to be, cause ten years from now, they're gonna think it was the same thing back here, and, and it's on.
Well, I mean, Joe.
Thank you, geez, Timmy, I'm leaving on that one.
Oh gee.
Last time the board first came in for the base camp, they weren't gonna be cooking any food there, all food to be brought in, free cooked, and shared with it. The bar was supposed to be just bare bones, it's a few, one bar set up, but the deck was there, but they have expanded a bit bigger building. There's more change of use, they added music, they added dancing, I don't think they had there, I haven't been there for so many years.
Did expand the building?
No, they didn't expand it.
Okay, but he said they did.
You said they did.
He said they expanded the door.
Seems like it's bigger than what it was originally.
No, I don't think the building is.
Wasn't gonna be any food cooked or prepared there, it'll be brought in for another tour.
It's gonna be brought in from the other lodges, governor's lodge and lot.
But the deck was, this guy, even though it's not on the board, it's meant, because of all the slush people going outside, sitting on the, stretch it outside in summertime, wintertime, it's slush up your knees, otherwise. That's why the deck was approved, even though it's not on the plan.
I'm not.
Well, this is, looks like nine twenty six oh seven, so it looks like. You know, someone, it was approved outside, either, you know, omitted from the minutes or approved outside with public hearing, but.
Well, it was on.
Okay, so it's, but it's here.
Again, it was on a plan, that's all the plan was registered in there, doesn't mean that they were gonna put it on that year, just might have shown it on the plan. But it wasn't on a building permit, it wasn't on, and, and I'm not arguing about the deck.
Okay, I mean.
I'm not arguing about the deck, what I'm saying is that this should be brought up to date, just like any other venue, or any other restaurant, or any other. Applicant in the town of Lincoln, it's had changes. It, it should be brought up to date as to what it is and what they're using there for, that's all I'm saying. You know, if, if you want me to, I would tell you, if they brought it in for site plan and review, I'm gonna vote yes on the thing, because. I don't care what they have, I just think that it needs to be brought up to date, because it is not consistent with what the original approvals were for. That's all.
Sure, Joe, is it your opinion they've expanded it since they got approval?
Yeah, the use of it, maybe that's how you're building.
So, you know, a change of an existing, existing use, an expansion of existing use requires site plan.
Cause they added cooking inside, oven, I think it's on the. When I was on the board, I left the board for a while, but I don't.
Well, they ever come in since then? So, I mean, are you saying, are you saying it should come in for site plan, you said last time, so are you changing your mind?
Well, unless, she needs to give us an update, we can put it on record, they haven't done that, I might decide plan.
That's what site plan does, it gives you.
Shouldn't take us too much things, set up for the house event, we'd like to change the recording of our pipeline.
Bergosian, when we brought him in, talked about this before. He knew he was in, it's the applicant, he agreed it needed site plan review, he agreed, if you look in the minutes. He agreed that it needed it, he agreed that he would come in for it. That's in the minutes.
Right, it is.
I notice, he sat right there and said it, I know I need it, I'll bring it in, we'll, we'll start working on it, and we'll, you know, we wanna do what's right.
Also, might mention changes. Long run, it'll protect him, but then I'll be gone over there.
Look, I'm not saying it's bad what they're doing, but I'm just saying, we gotta treat everybody the same here, folks.
Text the town and him both.
And it gives Carol in the planning office something that says, this is what they had as a twenty twenty three, this is what they came in for, and it's. That's all. Making a lot of nothing.
It came in to make it an update, that's it. We hear this day would happen in the past, and a lot of stuff is vague, and it's put on the, on the documentation.
It just lists the hours that they're up, I don't get they want up until two in the morning, it's, it's whatever they do there, but it needs to be.
Thirty years from now, we're not be here.
So, so just to be clear. Are we asking them to s- supply us with the, the list of changes, so we can a- attach it to the previous site plan? Or we asking them to come in for a new site plan?
I think they come in for a site plan review, does, what's it take?
I'm just asking.
Yeah, no, no, in my opinion, it takes very little for them to come in for site plan review, they noticed there are butters, they, they come here, they present, look, this is what we thought it was. Way back then, and, and just clarify what's there, we now have, we have two bars, we have. Uh, we have a, what, what, whatever they have there, and, and then it's, then it's, that, because it is different than what was originally done. You know, and, and that way there, it's, it's done, it's over with, and they move on. And then, when they wanna build a new lodge, if they wanna build a new lodge at South Peak, and they say they wanna talk about water tap points, if they want credited. You can then look at, okay, in twenty twenty three, here's what they had, and now they wanna build a big lodge, and we want them credited for X amount of points. So, it, it works that way too, it's not just, I mean, it does, it does, cause now, if, if they were gonna build a logic. They might say, well, we, you know, we.
We don't, the problem is no documentation.
And that's.
They use it for the.
We want documentation.
Well, that's, and, and, and we should be able to look at them and say, that's right, if we don't have it, so that's what we want, and we're not gonna fight it, we want the documentation to what you got there. You know, I mean, so that, if, when you get ready to build, if and when you get ready to build a brand new big South Peak hotel, restaurant, hotel, whatever you wanna build there. We know what was there prior.
I mean, they give us documentation, still not gonna treat, but you want documentation provided as part of a site plan review?
Yeah, then it follows the procedure, just like this guy right here, if he wants to enlarge this thing, or change this stuff, he's gotta come in for site plan review, that's all.
So, the, the thing is, we need to articulate is what exactly we're asking for, and I ask them that we feel that. The approved restaurant use has been expanded, is that what you're gonna, no?
Tell us what you have there today, cause we think it's different than, than, than what we have for documentation.
I understand that, but you go to that room, they're gonna say, well, what's here today is what was approved in two thousand and seven, we're not gonna give you a thing.
That's fine, then the next time they come in for site. Do, they'll be deficient, and we won't have to hear their case, don't they, they're gonna wanna get along, they're not gonna wanna fight, I don't wanna fight with them. They don't wanna fight, they're gonna come in and say that.
They do wanna fight, they got a lawyer.
But if, if they wanna fight, then let them fight.
Bill Gray, he told the, the board meeting at one time, any area that survives, it turns out, turns out, I mean, the patient and the planning board. The time they fight it, they lose, in the long term, there's always people who hold grudge and carry it forward with it. I must say, we don't agree with you, he told me, he was on the board.
The plan, the planning board still has not given Loon the specific list of things that we feel they have made changes to from their original approval.
Expand the restaurant.
We have, no, 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 show me the document that we sent to Loon, the outline, the specific.
And all I can tell you is what.
I don't, I don't listen to you. I wanna read it in the piece of paper that we sent to Loon outlining the specific ways that they have um not applied by their original approval.
Of course, the original minister was not exactly, not exactly.
If you look at the minutes, they'll talk nothing about what's there now. That's the first fact, okay? Second fact is you look at the building permit and you will see nothing on there about the debt, even if you're not gonna argue about the debt, there was nothing about that, there's nothing about the operations of the hours, there's nothing about a- any of that. Third thing is that when when you look at it, is you take a look at the water and sewer tap fees and there's none of those bars, there's zero, there's zero kitchens, so that is a fact that that back in back then, those weren't weren't in place.
But but you've already told me two things that.
Those, but believe it or not, OJ, those are.
They aren't, they aren't documented in the town records, so they can't.
They are, what are you talking about? They got water sewer tap assessment.
No, 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 the 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 first two things you read.
Oh, oh, the one about the 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 deck and the thing?
The deck and the hours.
Yeah.
That's not in the permit, so they cannot be breaking the 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 approval because they weren't in that.
Okay. Yeah, you could look at it and say it was structure, it was built two thousand and four, nineteen years later, is that, what's temporary? What's temporary? If you wanna ask them that, ask them, what's temporary? It's it's twenty years, a temporary structure?
What is, what was the time limit set in the approval?
There was no time limit set.
Okay, see, so they're not breaking that.
Take a look at the depth of temporary.
Pick out one thing that we can put in writing that says, the permit says this, or the approval says this, or the plan shows this. And that's not the way it is. I'm just saying, let's put all those things that's supposed to exist.
So let's do this then, OJ, so.
So wait a minute, so.
There's a water and sewer taps.
Wait, wait, wait. My question was, what have we presented to Loon in writing as far as?
I don't know that.
Huh?
I don't know what to.
Carol, did you send, you sent an email after we got the vote? Do we have that email?
I think it's in this chain.
Package.
I don't know who votes, says, let's clean it up, but I think that, OJ, I think the facts will think you send them.
We've not sent anything to Loon that shows what what we, why we're asking to update, what we think might be.
So then what we, so then what we need to send them is the the two thousand and seven water and sewer tap the assessment form. We also need to send them town link, it's water ordinance indicates any expansion or increase in use of the town's water system should be deemed new construction. And those two are enough to, even just those two are 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 enough to say that's a change.
Live music till midnight.
Well, but with, as OJ's, if you're wrong, but what OJ says, there's nothing that says they didn't get live music approved way back when. I don't think that that's the case. There's nothing that says that they have it, so I don't know how you can say it was, you can sit there and say it was or was, but I think just based on the water and sewer debt, the assessment and the fact that the town link's water ordinance says that any expansion or increase of the use of the town's water system should be deemed new construction and by putting in a kitchen, by putting in bars, that's an expansion of use. I mean, when you look at the, when you look at South Peak's advertisement, it said it was new. That's a whole nother thing. I mean, and they talk, and 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 they talk about a new, new bar and new, so they they're admitting that it's new. You have Mr. Burgosian, who is the person who's leasing it, saying it was new and it means that, OJ.
We're going in circles here.
Well, no, you're not.
You, you have will have not outlined how they have not complied with the with the existing program. Okay, calling something new, there's nothing in the in the in in the approval that says they can never call anything new in their whole existence. There's nothing there. So, the statement might make sense to you, but it's not working what was approved.
There's two new seventy five foot bars. And and I think what I've written before was the place supposedly changed boots, changed boots and eat a sandwich, right?
No.
That's what they were basing it on.
It was, it doesn't matter what they're basing, it doesn't matter what the approval said.
And Burgosian even admitted that he needed it. And Loon's the one saying that they don't, they're the one that hired the attorney. And Burgosian is the one who's who's saying he needed it and he's the one operating it, so ah, again, again. It's totally different than the water and sewer tap fee assessment.
Was it a date that came in with the chair counts and what they had?
Oh, Ryan.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Brilliant. Can't we use that and see, I mean, as a.
It's fewer seats than.
This viewer.
But I mean, if he's saying that there's new um base lodge or whatever it is, um, and do a comparison with what was presented.
There's new water uses, there's new sewer uses.
But your concept.
Those aren't expansion of use, they new.
Joe, Joe, Joe saying.
Their concept saying new, when P and C changed over the price chart, there was a new, newer store coming in, it's still the same store. Because when you wanna run it on on that, that don't mean it's a big change, right? There's never time to give it, but deploy from day one.
I mean.
I'm thinking if we just keep that information that's presented to us recently and to see if there's a change since then. I mean, is that? With all the development over there, and how long is that thing, you're gonna be sitting there still two years?
I mean.
I don't know.
It's a warm.
We go through this, we voted on it before, the vote still stands unless it changes.
Does something, does anyone feel we need to re-vote this?
I don't.
Stand on the old one.
So?
See, you need update, you gotta go to the whole kit and boot.
Hey.
If you wanna go along with it, if you don't, we'll vote to go full site plan.
I don't see any changes.
Just Brian Roden, willing to comment and discuss this, it says that Rick Kelly is willing to.
Well, we actually talked to our attorney about this in this meeting.
Yeah, they said we had to articulate our.
We talked to the attorney, he said, look, if you guys think it's been that, that anything changed like that, then hold the heat to the fire.
You have to give them a list. And that was part of what you said.
Just, just use the water and sewer tap assessment fees and say, look, this is what was this is what was applied for in two thousand and four, and now you have this.
And then add in anything that they've paid for and submitted since two thousand and four.
If there was a change, i- if it was a change in of of water use, it should have come into the planning board, depending on what the use was.
I think it was a sink.
If it was just one sink. But but if it, but if it if they have a whole kitchen down there like they do downstairs, and then they have the kitchen, a little bit of a kitchen upstairs, then that's, I mean, it does their water tap assessment fee said nothing about kitchens and and bars.
This one came in, it was updated.
If there's two bars there and there's, there's nothing on, they didn't update that. But if they updated that, said, oh, yeah, we're gonna put sinks in and we're gonna put two new bars, if they updated that, then it should have come to the planning board, cause bars were there before.
Is a bar seat different than a restaurant table seat according to our land use plan? I don't believe it is. I don't think the same.
But a, but a bar is different than a table.
Not according to our land use plans.
An alcohol bar is different than a table, I can tell you that.
Okay, then then let's bring that up for a change in all, let's change.
You're going for it.
Let's change.
I know it's trying to be because of the legal ease of the thing, but it just doesn't make sense.
If it's gonna be a problem, that a bar seat and a table seat are are two different things in definitions.
One gets served food, one gets serves alcohol.
Well, you both.
No.
Okay, if you, if you never served alcohol, if you didn't serve alcohol to, at a twenty foot bar before, it's it's a whole different thing. Look.
I got a question.
You can get alcohol at the table.
Said there were two stories in that building?
To what?
There's a.
Two levels inside.
There's a, there's a basement and there's the first.
The original permit didn't include the basement.
I know it didn't.
So they finished the basement into restaurant space or?
It wasn't a basement, they have the basement.
No, I think, no, 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 the basement was.
There was no basement in it originally.
The basement was there, but they weren't using, they were originally gonna use the basement for ski locker storage and then it became a kitchen. Again, all this just morphed into something because it's what they needed. And again, it just needs to come in. Loon is not on an island of their own. When they make changes, they need to come in just like the mess place here. You know, that 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 they're not an island of their own. When they make a change, they have to comply with the rules just like everybody else. That doesn't happen on a regular basis. It didn't happen at semi base camp. It just morphed into that, and that's why I'm saying clean it up. That's all. Don't shoot them, don't clean, clean it up. And 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 if they wanna hire an attorney, it's because of done, maybe they've got a guilty conscience, I don't know, but I I think there's enough information, just looking at the water and sewer tap assessment fee and and the approval in two thousand and four, say it's changed. And what they're advertising it is today. It was a temporary structure back.
There's supposed to be no hotel going in there one time.
Okay, well, it's not what's supposed to, just you, which they add, so.
Jimmy, you already asked, Joe said he's, well, wants to clean it up, he said that, I said that, so.
Yeah, and we just sat here forty five minutes and talked about the same thing we talked about last time, you said let's clean it up.
That's my family business.
Alright, so.
I don't know, that's my family business. We didn't get onto the.
Let's, so, I mean, we gotta send a response then, say why?
So we 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 discussed it and the vote stands.
They've expanded the exist, the approved restaurant use from two thousand and.
They've changed.
Changed slash expanded.
Originally, they weren't gonna do any washing dishes or utensils, they'll be plastic.
That's all, so, we would like you to come in.
So we're not gonna, we're not gonna list any specific violations?
You can, I just told you, use the, use the.
I'm not gonna write the letter, Paul, so you'll tell me. The board needs to agree on it, and I haven't heard agreement of it. Remember, I'll make a motion that that this board draft the letter and approve it before anything gets said or sent to Loon mountain.
That's what attorney buy, am I right, Carol?
Already sent them a letter.
Not outlining the specific violations.
That's what I'm saying.
As our attorney, I'll add that, I'll make the motion that we send a letter, written letter to Loon mountain outlining the violations of the original approval as our attorney suggested. Um, and that that letter get approved by this board before it gets sent to Loon mountain.
Carol, do you have enough, we we've talked about to draft the letter?
Let's put in a titty.
I, I'm hoping that the minutes will help me.
If you want, I think a bell.
If you want, I could tell you what I know that time.
Okay, so if anyone has ideas, they can email up to Carol and she'll circulate the letter, we'll get it signed for the next meeting or at the next meeting.
So are we gonna have, am I gonna? We're gonna do a draft and then send it to our attorney?
No, we're gonna do a draft and then send that out to the board. And the board.
Get in touch with that.
Way, weigh in with changes or say it looks good, and then once you get say majority, we, that's we send it at that point.
Alright, is everyone comfortable with doing that?
Okay, well, there's no internal.
I make a motion to do. There's no internal, no attorneys until we get, the board says the letters, fine, then you send it to the attorney, the attorney will critique it and say.
Wait, so we are sending it to an attorney?
I I think that.
Before we send it to Loon? No.
I I will, I thought Jason Dennis said he wanted to see it. If not, doesn't matter to me. Doesn't matter to me. They obviously had an attorney involved, I would think would be.
Okay, we can do that, I'm just. Once the board has voted on it, we'll send it to the attorney.
You know, and can say that we, just looking to clean. We went over it and again reaffirmed the vote. That's what we did, I mean, did.
It's better than all day. I'm gonna come in and water that. Okay, it's probably two months ago directly.
It's moving forward with the um.
Governor's be.
Oh, but Loon, you just had some, Loon had to authorize something about the.
Shared use agreement.
Shared use agreement, that was it.
That's, I mean, that's, but they're still, they're still. That's not stopping anything.
No.
The the first service said that that we need to do it, but then they're gonna keep moving forward and we're doing the design, the preliminary design.
Did you wanna do the CIP tonight or did you wanna?
Yeah, it's posted for tonight.
Well, I think what usually happens is the chair of the CIP committee just prevents to the board and then at the next. But I would like to next week if they possibly do it on the December eighth, instead of Tuesday before Thanksgiving.
If you want, what I would suggest about the idea is, unless you wanna have a detailed analysis of that. We didn't look at twenty five years, what we did was, we met with all the department heads. And we had um the end result, and you you can look at the changes that were there. But the end result to the CIP this year was, we kept flat. From uh twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four. They requested from twenty twenty three was one million six hundred sixty two thousand. And then twenty twenty four is one million six hundred sixty one thousand one hundred ninety four. Uh, we did make changes, everything that's highlighted in there is a change. Um, some of the changes are in amounts, um, some of the changes are in the years that it's carried out for. Um, we were actually lower when we finished um in the appropriation for twenty twenty four, so we went back and we put more money into.
The can correct.
The can correct building, uh, the police. The police station.
A lot of the fire trucks, the estimates were uh pretty dated.
Yep.
A lot of them were gone substantially, you know, we added money to the CIP accordingly.
The, yeah, the town services building. And Karina was supportive of the whole thing, town manager.
Yeah, there's a code way in the van, um, the dark green is the most recent changes we made.
Right.
And I, the reason we should look at this spreadsheet as the one that we picked up because black on the dark green is hard to read, so it retains the print or green white dark green cells. And then um and they're kind of color coded, um, depending on departments, it was getting confusing to have too much yellow because we made so many changes. So that's something there.
I mean, we we, we met, had a lot of changes for this, and it was at the direction and with the input of all of the with the representative from the board of selectmen, from the town manager, and with the department heads. And again, this is not a final, this is final from the, from the CIP committee, and now, once it gets voted in here, still has to go to the board of selectmen, which can make changes or additions or deletions, recommendations for that, or the budget committee. So, I mean, it it is a tool, but we we did the best we could with the information we had from the department heads al- along with, like I said, the board of selectmen representative and the town manager sitting there, so this was voted on last week, last week? Jimmy, we do it last week, we voted on it?
Yeah, I think it was twenty seven.
I can't remember, I lost the week somewhere. I can't remember, I lost the week somewhere, but, but.
Yeah, two weeks ago.
So we, uh, yeah, I mean, and it, it seemed to make everybody happy.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm pretty to the budget committee, but the police department gets a six million dollar grant from the town, and loan from the town, they gave a million dollar grant. A grant from the government, and then somebody said they want another million dollars extra, you go on top of that?
No, what happened with that, according to where I was on this, explained to them, the million dollar grant is only gonna end up being like seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that's, that's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar, what you call it?
A match.
Match. And so they're gonna get that. Um, the price came in. Uh, higher than what they thought. They're trying to get, get it furnished, furnishings and fixtures, I would call it, are, uh. Were not part of the original. Budget amount, and the airports were not part of the original um approved amount. Uh, but they feel they need them because it, it will save on the cruisers. Like, life of the cruisers and having to go out and scrape them all off all the time.
Well, plus they wanted to do a wall of construction who was.
Right, and because, right, it would be more cost effective to get that done now versus going back out later and, and rebidding it for. If you do it next year or the year after, the price is just gonna go up, so.
And there were cameras that weren't budgeted that.
Some of the cameras, right. Can you think of anything else, OJ? I didn't say, I didn't talk to him, you know, I didn't say.
Um, the security, not just the cameras, but like the door lock and badge card, whatever system. Um, the contingency and then the engineering, which um clerk of the works, engineering, all of the architect.
Engineer, the contingency was a big one joke because when we were talking to Karina, there was not much of a contingency in this, the original amount of money, so when we. Saw that we were under budget, or we were under what we spent last year, we put more money. Into that so that they could have a little bit of a contingency because the contingency was nothing for a six million dollar bill, seven million dollar bill.
Yeah, and you know, I, ideally, we don't spend any of that, but realistically, there's gonna be something that comes up.
No, it does.
Always.
It's like when I cleared the grammar school. Twenty trees come down on the building, I had to go back and clean up after that.
I was, I'm. Brutal, that's the next person. I, I gotta tell you that it was good to see that it came in under after all of the changes. I think we, it was, it was the right way. I don't think we, we don't look at the bottom line. We have all the department heads come in and tell us what they want, and then we talk to them about it, and then they say, well, you know what, we really could let that go out a few more. When we finally get down to the bottom of it, if there's money that hasn't been spent, or, or at least if it's not level, you go back and you say, okay. You know, it's just some things that we really, we were kinda hedging on, but, because we, and we marked those off and we, and we go back and we look at them and say. How about if we put a little more money to that? The can correct, for example, they had a meeting, two meetings. Came up with some ideas of things they wanted to get done. There was only forty thousand dollars in there, and we. Because of those two meetings, we suggested that if they brought it to a hundred so that they could do some more things over there, and. We've still able to do that and keep a bunch of.
Thirty million dollar CIP they wanna put in, the can correct.
It was, it was two, but it doesn't matter that, we, we're not focusing on that. What we did was, based on a meeting of the people that came there and OJ went there, so he knows what I'm talking about, I mean, you know, they. They appeared like they needed some more money to get some of the, what they call them, the, the things, certain things. I don't know what they call it, the word they use for it, but it was things they need to get done. And Jimmy Martin was there, and he said, you know, forty thousand will get you some, but it would be nice to have a little more, pretty much, because they were talking about snowmaking. Doing better with that, having a place to sharpen the skis, they had the, the ski instructor there, uh, whatever his name, uh, ski race instructor.
Aaron.
Aaron, so they all came up with some pretty good ideas, you know, and, uh, but forty thousand bucks wasn't a lot of money, so. You know, we put a lot of money into things like the community building and things, why not put a little more in for the can correct, also. It, uh, it, it, I, I thought it went well, I guess that was one of the better years I had doing it.
On the CIP? I, I mean, I haven't read this through in, in detail, but I will say that I'm glad that, that you went through it the other day and rebalanced things.
Well, yeah, I mean, it goes. The department heads really, they are conscious of, of what they spent, and we just ask simple questions like. For example, that loader that was supposed to have the snowball, I mean, Nate really, he didn't want that, it was someone else wanted that, he said, you can go there. He said, okay, so can we reallocate that? What do you think about that? And we did, you know, and, and Nate's, Nate's the one that's happy with that, so that was good, I mean. And Karina came up with suggestions, I get, I know, I mean, it worked, I think it works great that way. I really do, I mean, people get what truly, no one's not gotten what they wanted, I don't think, out of any of those meetings, I.
So this is notices the public hearing, but if you want, I'll take it home and read it, we can have a, we can have another hearing.
Except for tonight, because it's. I mean, it's gonna, the reason I say that is because it goes to the board of selectmen, it goes to the budget committee too, so this is truly just kinda like a.
You noticed it here, it says. Presentation.
No, but I mean, normally, what I do is I put a notice in the paper.
Well, if you haven't done that, then let's, yeah, that's what we usually.
Would have had to do it two weeks ago.
Okay, no, that's fine, so yeah, let's, in case someone out there wants to comment, that's fine.
I'm fine with that. Were there any questions?
Does anyone have any questions?
Would be December eighth or thirteen.
Thirteen.
The first meeting. Anyway, I have the notice ready to go, so I'm gonna go from here, send it to the newspaper then.
A doctor, this will be December thirteenth after we have the public hearing.
Sounds good. Does anybody know when some of the projects that were approved are gonna start?
Which project?
I mean, they're all list, listed.
Oh, so the police department and like skate park, like one of them.
I mean, a lot of these.
Police department is, is already been started, um, the water tank's already been started. And, and the town's responsibility for the skate park is complete. We're just waiting for the company to come in, it's actually gonna build it.
The skate park, or the king?
The skate park at the community center.
Oh, the, I'm sorry, I thought, because they were talking about a nice skate.
Nice skating, no, that's.
Going into winter now, so I'm thinking winter.
Alright, is there any other business? Your motion, motion adjourned? Second, all in favor?
We did vote to this. To, uh, to stop public input.
There's nobody, I mean, I didn't know what.
One to three inches. Tomorrow. Have a good night.
Thanks, Paul. Hi, Chief. Walking, Daniel? Are you walking?
It's so far away.
See you later.
The body shop screwed me over.
Where's the body shop?